As you can see, Mr. Callen is not here today. He is in a conference, so I have had the duties to chair this meeting. Number three is consent and approvals.
Okay, for consent approval today, August 7th, we have exoneration. There are 57 listings, $77,255.09, text years 2011, '12, '13. There are three statements to be created for Hilling Enterprises and Andre Palmer. Correction of ticket number 31486, fiduciary orders as of August 7th. Purchase orders and pay outers, general county fund, $251,006.713. Full severance fund, $10,058.58. Chestnut Ridge Park, $6,531.79. Nine-one cash, $1,031.41 cents, for total of $269.308.91.
Move for approval.
And there's a second? They're properly moved in second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It passes. Number four, Ms. McClure, I believe there is no grants at this time?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll move on to that. Number five, correspondence.
I have several letters that have been regarding Westover annexation. If you will allow, just read it by date and reference, and that way they can be just into the record rather than-
That would be fine.
...the entire grant letter. July 25, a letter to me from John Philip Millick, reference petition and application of the City of Westover to annex a parcel of real estate, 102.272 acres more or less, by minor boundary adjustment, July 17, 2013. Second letter, this is from Ray Simonton to me, referencing revised petition for annexation by the City of Westover, dated July 26, 2013. Another letter from Jackson Kelly to me, from John Philip Millick, dated July 29, reference petition and application of the City of Westover to annex a parcel of real estate, 102.272 acres more or less, by minor boundary adjustment, July 17, 2013, revised July 24, 2013. And a letter from Jackson Kelly to me, from John Philip Millick, August 2nd, petition and application of the City of Westover to annex a parcel of real estate, 102.272 acres more or less, by minor boundary adjustment, July 17, 2013, revised July 24, 2013.
I'd like to, yeah, Boar, is that it?
The next is a letter, this is regarding the revised petition. This is from Castor Cheney to me. And this is the one that states the language that's been changed, if you like that, going into the record.
And if you could check, yeah, the exact change too, if you could read that into the record, I think that's important.
Okay, this is dated July 24, revised petition for annexation by the City of Westover. Our right to request that the Commission accept the enclosed revised petition for annexation on behalf of the City of Westover in order to correct a technical error in the previous prescribed annexation. As was noted in the public hearing for the Commission today, the petition erroneously stated that there are no qualified voters in the proposed annexation territory. This particular language has been removed from the petition on page 1, paragraph 2, and a sentence that included the language now states, quote, "The proposed annexation should not, could not be efficiently and cost-effectively accomplished under West Virginia Code 864 because the majority of freeholders of the proposed annexation territory have declined to file a petition for annexation pursuant to Section 864," end quote. This sentence appropriately reflects the determination by Westover City Township, paragraph 1, of its resolution authorizing the application for annexation. The technical correction, removing reference to qualified voters, has no effect on the completeness of the application itself because the impracticality of annexation under West Virginia Code 864 was determined by the city based on the willingness of the freeholders' field group annexation. This determination was contained in the resolution previously submitted to the Commission. However, this revised petition will remove any statement that qualified voters do not exist in the area of the annex. This formal correction to the petition does not affect the Commission's order to accept the application. The impracticality of annexation under West Virginia Code 864 arises due to the unavailability of a petition, of a petition for annexation from the freeholders in the area. The petition by the majority of freeholders is required regardless of whether qualified voters are present. Two of the three freeholders in the area proposed for annexation. Morgantown Mall Associates Limited Partnership and Morgantown Commons Limited Partnership will not submit a petition requesting annexation. So annexation by this method was unavailable. Therefore, this correction to Westover's petition should not require any change in the Commission's order following today's hearing. I request that you enter this revised petition in the Commission's records for the purposes stated. Should you need any additional information, please contact me through the circle. And I have the revised petition with the opportunity that we accepted and signed.
Normally, following the procedure, we do not have to open up this for discussion. However, I would request, are the both parties here at this time?
Westover, sir.
Is the other, because I was going to allow them to speak for three minutes, and then you could respond for three minutes.
Yes, please, over here.
Okay, just make note that we were opening it up to allow them to respond to the letter, specifically the August 2nd letter, where they are requested to respond, including our objection to consideration of Westover's revised petition pending resolution, and requested to speak to it. I want to make sure that we are on record, that we did offer that as an option. Since I offered the both, I will also offer to you all, if you want to speak, I can tell you, you would only be able to speak to the specific changes, and you only have three minutes, and I brought my-
Yes, sir.
So, feel free.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm joined by, of course, the Mayor of Westover, Dave Johnson, and my colleague, Ryan Simonton. Very briefly, I thought the letter was extremely well-written, but first of all, I apologize to the Commission for the error. It was an omission that we didn't realize until Mr. Melick pointed it out, of course. He accused us of trying to mislead you. Not the case, it was a mistake. And we apologize for creating an issue where there need not be one. It's important to remember that there are two categories in 8-6-4. There are freeholders and qualified voters. A freeholder, of course, is, as the name implies, the owners of the property, the real estate owners. The qualified voters are the businesses. For us to suppose or to represent to the Commission there are no businesses in the mall is obviously a blatant mistake and not a manipulation of fact. But as Mr. Medici read, 864 requires a majority of votes from both the freeholders and the qualified voters. Knowing that the freeholders would not consider annexation, and I'll get to why we knew that in a minute, the conclusion is the same. So the predicate fact was an error. There are two predicate facts. One was right, one was wrong, but the conclusion's the same, and it doesn't change once we correct the fact there are qualified voters up there, but the freeholders are not even responding. And what I'd like to do is ask my colleague to present the Commission with three letters, dated August 27, 2009, November 16, 2009, and January 13, 2010. And let me, obviously, the Commission can read this at its convenience, but on August 27, 2009, we proposed, that is, the City of Westover proposed to Glimcher, three options. One of the options was that they would annex the property in the City of Westover. We didn't qualify utility service on this proposal, we suggested the option. The following letter, in November of that year, we again asked them to consider annexation, and give them 1 through 8, the reasons why we think annexation is good for the mall, for Westover, and for Montague County. No response. So in January 2010, you see the third letter that I've given you, is that we've got, we had no response. And I wasn't clever enough at the time to document all the refused phone calls and non-return messages that we got from Columbus, but the fact is, the letter is a record and shows that the mall didn't respond, never did respond, to our invitation to discuss why we thought the annexation made sense for the mall, for the city, and certainly for Montague County. Because of that lack of response, in the following adversarial position taken by the mall, this Commission's well aware of, the City Council was correct in concluding that there was no way we're going to get two of the three freeholders to sign onto the petition for annexation required under 864, so the conclusion again was correct.
Exactly, 2 minutes and 59 seconds, I'm very impressed.
Thank you, Commissioner. I left a second for my boss to talk.
Since there's no one else to speak to the issue, representing, what would you like to do?
I think we've got two issues here on correspondence. One, we have all the letters, and in addition to the letters, that was just provided to the Commission by Mr. Stranko. First, I'd like to make a motion that all the correspondence in relationship to this annexation process be made part of the file for the public hearing. And I make reference to Judge Guizou's court order on the last decision that only evidence introduced during the public hearing can be considered by this Commission. So therefore, I'd like to move that that be part of the documents and evidence that will be considered during the public hearing, as well as oral testimony.
I'll second that. Since we, I have no discussion on itself, now the voters in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Or without a third person here.
The second issue, before I make a motion, you can address the issue of setting of the public hearing date.
Okay, I have that suggested as Wednesday, September 4, 7 p.m., and the open area of the Sheriff's Department. I haven't clarified that with them yet, but-
I got one step ahead of myself here, I think. Before we get to that, we need to, I think, a motion is in order to approve the revised annexation petition, and also that it be made a part of the record for the public hearing.
So you are moving that?
Yes.
I will second, and before I continue, I think I will just use a quote that was, after reading the material, and I think this is my feeling exactly. "The formal correction to the petition does not affect the Commission's order to accept the application." And I believe that's what we're doing today, and that's why I will second that motion. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it is now formally accepted, the revised petition. With that being said, we go to number six, which is unfinished business, exactly setting up a public hearing to consider this new amended petition.
September 4, 7 p.m., Sheriff's Office, pending your approval, cameras on location on the street, so we can confirm that when you go back to the Capitol.
I would move that we set the formal date and time for the public hearing to consider the petition of Westover for annexation, according to the date set Wednesday, September 4, 7 p.m.
I'll second that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I do have a couple questions. Knowing that this could turn into some, as we saw already at the last meeting, some heated discussions, are we able to set parameters now, or do you want at a later date?
I think we'll open the public hearing, we should do that at the beginning of the conference.
Yes, so we just probably need to discuss, you know, a limited time, and so on, and have some boundaries.
I would suggest that at the beginning of the public hearing, that the guidelines be discussed with everybody present.
Okay, I think that's a great, yeah.
And then, we all should be able to adhere to them.
I think so, too. I also hope, and again, with West TV, I'll do a plug for you, hopefully, if you were able to be there, we would like to have you there, so that way, the people who can't make it would be able to watch it on TV. So, again, that's something we're real proud of, and again, I want to thank West TV for being here, and hopefully, you'll be able to be there. Okay, is there any other unfinished business? Yeah. Okay. Number seven is new business. Schedule public hearings for map amendments within the West Run Planning District. And I guess they'd all be the same, Irwin Street on Wednesday, September 4, at 1:15, 10:27, Irwin Street, Wednesday, September 4, 1:30, and Idlewood Street, Wednesday, September 4, 1:45 p.m.
Move for approval.
I'll second. Now we have the first and the second properly moved for these map amendments. How do you vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any other new business?
Yeah.
Okay. Reports, number eight, is reports from county commissioners.
I guess you could consider this new business, but old business. When I ran for this position on the county commission, and going around the county, there was some people that showed me a petition, they claimed there were 3,000 names on it, to have five commissioners. At that time, I advocated that a procedure be developed so that we could divide this county into five equal areas of representation, so that five commissioners could be elected, but not have duplication of commissioners, and be monopolized by one area of the county. It really didn't fly, so here we are now, over four years later, and the topic of five commissioners has reemerged. I think Commissioner Bloom, you sort of addressed that, I think, during your campaign. Some of the knowledge that I have and the insight into that, providing the law hasn't changed, because it has been over four years since I looked at that issue, is that there's more to it than just saying we're going to have five commissioners. The, one of the things I wanted to do was to go ahead and put it on the ballot, and let the people decide whether or not, first of all, they wanted five commissioners. I was told by one of our state senators, that if the people voted to have five commissioners, that would motivate the state legislature to do what was necessary in the state to enable this county to have five commissioners, because it would take action via the West Virginia Legislature in order for us to have five commissioners. So, there are some bases that need touched to accomplish that goal. What I'd like to do is just to suggest, or even to make a motion, it's not on our agenda, but I think through correspondence, and also report from the commissioners, that we tend sometimes to put issues out and never get closure on them. This issue hasn't had closure for me for over four years. I would like to suggest that we, or move, or whatever we need to do, that we send Phil Magro, the county's legal counsel, a request to research the statutes and the proper procedures, should this county decide to create two additional county commissioners, with a procedure that would guarantee fair and equitable representation by those additional commissioners. Now that may be something similar to what the Board of Education's doing, to where you have to live with at least two from one district. But I think it'd be prudent for us to get some legal guidance, and then at that point, share that information with the general public, so that we are letting people know, in Montague County, we're looking at five commissioners, we're looking at the way we can do it, and then making a decision, do we want to put this on the ballot and let the people vote for it? So I guess I would make a motion that we send Phil Magro, our legal counsel, that letter of request.
I'll second, and for discussion, again, for clarification, we're sending the letter to Mr. Magro to look into the actual procedure process, and what statutes we have to follow to get to the next step. Then we will bring it back here, discuss it, and then we could have a process of whether we're going to move forward, or what we're going to do with it.
Yes.
So again, it doesn't have to be immediate, but we are just sending the letter to start the initial process at looking at what it takes to have five commissioners in this county's authority.
Well, if, we have made a decision that we'll-
Right, I see.
But if a decision would be made to put it on the ballot, I'm not real sure we could get it on the ballot with this upcoming May primary. Now, he could advise us of that. Of course, I'm of the opinion, based upon what I was told by a state senator, that we can put anything we want on the ballot. And that doesn't mean it can go into effect.
Right.
The legislature's going to have to support it. But we may be faced with that situation, is that get the feeling of the people, and see what the people of this county want in terms of number of commissioners, and then pursue that course of action, whatever it is.
Yeah, I think part of, when we just say that we're going to put it up ballot, I think there's some more things that have to be looked at. Like you said, financial concerns, space, but also a concern that I had supported, but several people after being on the commission have made a comment. I was looking at the possibility of having three county commissioners, with two at large, and someone said, "Well, if the majority of the people live in the City of Morgantown area, you may have a, you know, area where there's only, has representation of three, or even four possible members." So again, I think it's a great idea, I think it's something that the public has been requesting us to look into, and I think we just move forward on that. So unless, you have anything else?
No.
It's been properly moved in second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So, one more thing we'll have you do? Any other?
Just one general statement. I won't speak for the other county commissioners, but I think we have the same position, is that I support the 4-H group in this county, contrary to anything you may read, contrary to anything you may hear. In fact, when I was younger, I was in the 4-H. So I personally experienced the benefits of being a member of the 4-H. It's a very valuable group. It's very beneficial, I believe, to young people, sort of helped me a little bit. And I just want to set the record straight, that this Commission is not anti-4-H. And I can assure you, I am not anti-4-H. And those programs need maintained, and I would do everything, and I think this Commission will do everything to see that they are. That's it.
Thank you. I have two issues, and one I'd like to hold off until we have the reports from elected officials, or from department supervisors. One, I would like, with the permission of Commissioner Bartola, to start the process of looking into the possibility of a wellness program for the employees in the county here. Again, what that entails, I'm not sure yet, whether we might even need to do a survey among the employees to consider this, if there's specific programs. I think in the long run, it would benefit not only the individuals' health, but also our medical bills. So I think it's something to look at, maybe even if we start small, have a cafeteria plan, and then people, you know, who don't use it, we're not going to pay for them, but basically, hopefully, we will be able to provide another reason for working for the county, I'll say that. The second issue is one that's the exact opposite, which is more disturbing. It was brought to my attention, and I'll let you all know, what happened up in Salersburg, Pennsylvania, in Ross Township. During a supervisor's commissioners' meeting, an individual came in, and unfortunately, brought in a gun, and killed three people. What I'd like to know is, I know we have two years from now, or three years, when we move to the new building, we will have that in place, you know, some sort of a safety. I would like to see what we might need to do or look at, if it's realistic for us to consider some sort of a program where maybe we have to all channel through one door, and have some security. But I think we're at a situation right now that, especially like this issue that we're dealing with, annexation, is a very heated issue. I would hate to see someone come in and make a mistake, you know, and not realize what's going on. So again, it's not a motion, I'm just asking, if you would consider, what, you know, is that a possibility that we should look into? Or should we first send that to the Sheriff Department to see what his recommendations are, and then go from there, to see if it's needed or not?
If I recall correctly-
Yeah.
-the courthouse security has some regulations that are governed by the State Supreme Court that we have to comply with. I think it was looked at having metal detectors once before. In fact, I think the judges recommended that we only use one entrance, at one point. There's been a lot of ideas about enhancing security, but what it also, what happens is, when you tighten up security procedures, you also tighten up access by the general public. And I think that's the issue that has to be weighed, in terms of how it impacts the public, if you implement security procedures, and everybody has to go through a metal detector. You know, probably the most secure operation we have, Gary White's with us, is over at the magistrate court, in terms of access. Now they deal with a little different clientele, and probably with domestic situations, and probably the potential is much greater in magistrate court than it would be for this courthouse. You know, there's trade-offs, you know? False security is worse than no security. And I guess what comes to mind is, as you look at our country in terrorism, and you look at, in fact, I heard the President on Jay Leno's show, and he talked about the Boston explosion, and activities, and, you know, at some point, you have to make a determination of how you balance public safety, and not compromise public access. And that's something that needs addressed when you start talking about security. Now, when the new federal building, and the courts, and some other staff are moved out, down to there, I think there's no question there'll be adequate security down there. And if we move around here, and there's some changes here, but you know, we have, what, five, Bobby? Five entrances, exits? So, I mean, technically, I mean, if you looked at very stringent security procedures, you either shut them all down and have one, or you man every entrance and exit with a security person, and a medical, metal detector. And do we go to that extent? You know, I think there's some issues that need addressed, and they need addressed by several people. I think the sheriff, the courthouse security, I think the general public, the feelings of the general public should be considered. I was contacted, Andrew's standing in the hallway, and, you know, and he interviewed me yesterday, he said, "How do you feel about, like, the shooting that took place?" And I said, "Well, you know, having been a former police officer in a day when, in the City of Westover, when I was the only one, today I think it takes nine police officers to do the job."
That's a drop-off.
But you got called out at night, and was there a danger involved? Certainly was, 3:00, 4:00 o'clock in the morning. You know, I worked in the federal prison system for 24 years, worked in a housing unit with 150 inmates, no weapons. Was there a danger involved? Certainly was. I visited a number of institutions throughout the Northeast United States, United States Penitentiaries, where you welcome 2,000 inmates. Was there danger involved? Yes, there was. Do you let those potentials preoccupy you, make your decisions for you, or do you make good, sound, common sense decisions? And that's what's facing us with courthouse security. The incident in Pennsylvania was tragic, was unfortunate, but how do you react to it? Do you knee-jerk react to it, or do you react to it in a very objective and a practical kind of way? That's all I have to say.
And I think you're right, and I'm not looking for, you know, and you're right, but it's not a knee-jerk reaction. I think safety and security for not only the people who are here in this room, but also for employers is important. I still would like to see if it could be addressed, even, what could we do, step by step, to maybe tighten some things up in the security? Would that be okay to send a letter saying, you know, with these developments, are there some things that we could take steps to look at? And I'd like that to be considered. That was something I mentioned before, I was concerned, when you come in that back way, you know, where we park, and so on, and you have a lot of money there from the, you know, the staff that collects the money, they could be in and out very quickly. So, I'd like that to be at least considered and looked at. And again, not immediately, but something we can address, if that's okay.
I think we could refer to maybe Bobby Doyle, and maybe Gary White and the Sheriff Board.
That would be, that would be fine.
Just to examine it and make a determination, should we, with any recommendations from those-
Yeah, if that was a-
-enhance the security that exists.
And I'd rather do that informally, it's not as a motion, so, okay. The third issue I want to speak to, but I'd rather wait till we get to this next one, which is number nine. Number nine is actually, and I'm going to break it into two parts, reports from department supervisors, but I'm going to do it a little differently. I'm not going to go through everyone's name, I'm going to ask if there is a department supervisor who has something to say, please stand up, and then explain it. Okay? Mr. Doyle?
I'm going to give copy of this to Ben, so he can follow with us, and maybe he can put some of this on the front page to clear everything up. First thing is, I'll speak for the Commission, but what was in a newspaper, and Commissioner Bloom asked me to get some facts, and find some stuff to clear some situations up that are on the webpage- are on the webpage of www/savecampmuffley.com. And the first thing is, is Camp Muffley's not going nowhere. It's always going to be there. It's just a reorganization program that some people don't like at this time. And on the front page of that, it stated, these are statements made, I'm just answering, that the commission has stated publicly that Camp Muffley is a county property and equipment or materials donated or paid for by Camp Muffley may be appropriated by Mr. Bobby Doyle and Mr. Carlos Goss and placed or used in any facility owned by the county commission. Well, I supplied a picture there, and here's a picture for the commission. What we took from there is a picture of the construction lights that were in the building when we started work on a dining hall. These lights are being stored at the maintenance garage for other construction projects. And on the bottom of that, there is a date that shows that picture was taken yesterday. So nobody stole any lights or anything from the 4H, or Camp Muffley, I'm sorry. The next statement. "Mr. Bobby Doyle, on behalf of the county commission, reviewed and rejected all the bids and decided that the county maintenance crew could complete the new dining hall." Okay, let's go back. "In 2009, Mr. Asil Kennedy, Mr. Bob Bell, and Mr. Bill Bartolo agreed to save this structure and had the county maintenance crew finish the dining hall that's been sitting empty for years. In 2011, Eldon Callan joined the commission. Under Commissioner Kennedy, Bartolo, and Callan, they all agreed to restructure the county maintenance crew and make it a facilities department. In the restructure, we added a construction crew in March 2012. This crew took the dining hall project and worked on it every day that could not have been done without a maintenance crew, seeing that every other county building could not be let go at this time. Project was completed and dedicated on the 9th of November 2012. So it wasn't put away for years as stated in that article. The project was bid, and the last bidder was around $1.6 million. It was completed for $385,065.64. I'm sorry, $385,000. For the material, and if you added the labor and benefits at the employees, at $199,262, this is a total of $584,327.64. This is a savings of $1,015,672.64. If there's any letters to be sent to the editor, it should be to thank the previous and present commission for saving the dining hall and the taxpayers all that money." Now, that's two. The last one. "Mr. Bobby Doyle took over control of the project, reworked the original plans for the building, cutting costs deemed to be too expensive to pursue. One was the fire sprinkler system and limiting the occupancy of the new dining hall to 250 people." And here's two other pieces of information for you all. Number one, the electric that was designed for this building was three-phase. The closest three-phase power is one mile down the road. After meeting with Allegheny Power Engineers, it was too feasible and cost was too high to bring three-phase power to this project. The HVAC system had to be redesigned to meet the new power that is available. The occupancy was put on 250 for two reasons. Since 1979, Camp Muffley has been licensed through the DEP for a maximum of 250 residents per day for the septic system. Since there is only 250 licensed for the camp each day, it was correct thing to do to post a dining hall of 250 people or less. "After many conversations with the state fire marshal's office, occupancy of 300 people or more, you must have a sprinkler or fire alarm system. Doing the calculations of the square footage and the number of exits that were put in the building before we started, and a number that was permitted to be there, it was decided to limit 250 people or less in this structure at one time. This is why the signs were posted, so we could remove these systems and design it to save this money." So the article that, if anybody wants to look, that's the answers to what was stated in this savecampmuffley.com.
Before we go on, so I wanted to respond to that also, because I had asked Mr. Doyle. The situation concerning Camp Muffley is quite disturbing and disappointing. I, at this time, with the request of your support, Commissioner Bartolo, I'd like to send a letter to the individual who started the website, Mr. Hawkins, ask him to clarify, you know, his particular concerns and bring facts that would dispute the facts that we have in front of us right now. And then I'd also ask that, in the letter, if he is unable to support the direction that this commission and work with the commission is going, that we would consider, that he consider himself turning his resignation. Again, again, I'd like to wait and see how he responds. I want to also make it clear, and I'm really proud of this group, and just for people, I'll try and do this because we do have a TV, the Montegay County Commission's organizational chart. One of the things the three county commissioners decided to do with the help of the administrative staff was to finally come up with an actual plan of how we have designed the county commission workers, who is under who, and that's the process, and that's what we've been working under. And I just want to get a clarification, when there was a question about just giving a person the job coordinator of programs and services, and then under that was the park and litter control. So what we have tried to do, and I can make copy for you if you want, we are moving forward this county. I'm very pleased that the commissioners are working together on that. I'm very disturbed that, I do not like personal attacks on individuals, especially when there's false and misleading information. So I look forward to the response from Mr. Hawkins, and hopefully we can address these issues. 4H is a very important part of the camp. It is not the owner of the camp, and it isn't their camp. I'm going to be point-blank with it. We are putting all three county programs together, camps, I'm very excited about this. We're going to treat them equally. There will not be any individual who after a while has been on the board for so long that they feel that they have ownership, or that we have any sort of, how would I say, political interest. We want the camp for the citizens of Montegay County and promote it. So with that, I will, I will be quiet unless you want to add anything.
I'd just like to add one thing. You know, cooperation achieves much better results than conflict does. And I'd like to see us include in any kind of correspondence, that invitation to work with us on this transition, rather than to work against us. Because I'm not real sure this commission can tolerate a camp board that's working contrary to the best interests of the camp, or the commission. The other thing is, you know, this, this transition, the best example I can give the general public, in fact, I told my brother and his wife just the other day, if you're out by Mason Dixon Historical Park, you need to really drive in there and look at the improvements that's been made to that park. It's, it's the landscaping, there's work going on on the cabins for rental, the remodeling that was done to the superintendent's house is just amazing, and that was all accomplished with county commission people. If we can achieve the same kinds of results at Camp Muffley, at Chestnut Ridge Park, if we can make these public parks, and that doesn't mean exclude 4H from Camp Muffley, that means 4H can be a part of Camp Muffley, but it should not be the sole purpose for the existence of Camp Muffley. But I think one of the tasks that we have is to make sure we communicate to the people in terms of, how is that, how are these changes going to benefit the people in Montegay County? And I think that it's obvious, if you visit Mason Dixon Historical Park, I think that's all it will take, to look at the condition of that park and improvements that have been made up to this point, and know that our goals are to do the same thing at the other two parks, to make them very attractive, very receptive to public use.
But I think that, hopefully, we can put this issue behind us and maybe move forward and work together along those lines. Are there any other department supervisors who have any issues to discuss at this time? Seeing none, any reports from elected officials? Your honor?
Mary Johnson, Westover. I guess the meeting before last, I missed the fireworks, so I think a local developer came in and accused Mr. Blum and myself of having made some type of deal. I've never asked anyone during this process, this has been going on for three-plus years now of annexation, to make any type of compromise. All we've done is shown the facts and our opinions and our desires to annex this property. And I think that that certain developer owes me and the commission an apology. If anybody in this room thinks that I would compromise my integrity, or anybody wanting to commission, they're sorely mistaken. And I would, I would request that the man come up with the proof that these actually happened. I regret that none of the naysayers are here, well, one's here, insignificant at best. So I just wanted to make that a part of the record.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Is there any other elected officials? Like, seeing none?
Mark.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Hey, we have nothing. Other than the deputies are out, and they star said they're liberated and out of the union, so.
Okay, good.
Doing a good job.
Haven't had any complaints. I mean, let's, you know, when you're seen, usually they run away from, you know, and they haven't been running away. In fact, they're actually looking forward to see you so they can explain their, you know, what is going on.
Yeah, we've gotten all that, so it's going well. I want to get that info where we're going to.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there any other elected officials out there?
No.
Before we move into the comments from the public, since I get to run this meeting, I'm going to ask for the following rules. That any person come up, because we have TV, we had some problems hearing the individuals. We're going to ask you to come up and speak in front of the mic so that people can hear you, and we all can see what is going on. Also, I am going to request that you limit your conversations to specifically three minutes, that seems to work very well, and there will be no personal attacks on anyone in this room or any individual. And I believe as long as we follow those guidelines, I think we will be able to move expeditiously through this. So at this time, is there anyone from the public who'd like to get up and speak?
I would.
Sure, come on down. If you could state your name and where you live, just for the record. Thank you.
My name's Stan Shinkovich, and I'm a resident of Bloody Run Road. We've been in the commission meetings several times, trying to get water on the road. I think our last meeting was in December. We talked, and Scott Crable, you all given him an agenda to make us up a new estimate on the four-inch line, well, he has never contacted us on any of that. And the original estimate was like, they wanted 14 residents to pay like $380,000 or the six-inch line upgrade. And by my figures, right now, we're like $30,000 off if we, even with the six inches, if we get the 150 that we were given in '07 from the county commission. And of course, of our last meeting, when Asil Kennedy was there, he said that was, there was contingency on that 150,000, that we'd get it right away through a property. There was no contingency, you can talk to John Powell about that, because there was no, ever no chance of that coming through this private property, because the water line is on each end of us, we're quarter of a mile in between of the water line. And like I say, we're, even with the six-inch line, we're only about $30,000 off. He hasn't come up with any figures on the four-inch line. Now we're here, they're going to upgrade, or not upgrade, but on, what, Hornbeck?
Hornbeck, they know she put in fire.
Now they're going to put fire hydrants in. You know, they'll hand the money, they said, but were they getting that, you know, to do all that? And we're here to ask, you know, what can we do? I mean, I've contacted the governor, I've contacted Public Service Commission, I've tried to research for some grants and things like that. I can only go so far on a computer, because, you know, I don't know all these departments and things like that to do. But again, Clinton, we've been trying, I myself have been over 20 years trying to get water. The other people, we've been almost 10. And every, and the thing with the, what was it, the rock bars he's saying, and have to cross a creek, those two creek crossings are, that has to do with the landowner. Once that meter is put in at the road, that's his responsibility to cross the creek, so that has nothing, no bearing on the cost of the project.
Refresh my memory here a little bit in terms of-
Clinton Water.
Clinton-
Clinton Water.
Why don't you come on up here and just state your name?
They've stuffed the water line up on Bloody Run from Hornbeck Road and cut it off. I don't know the exact distance, I'm going to say half a mile, but I don't know. They've stubbed it down off of Goshen Road, which Bloody Run runs from Hornbeck to Goshen Road, it's a cut across road, it's down. There's a mile and a quarter and 14 families where it needs water down through there in the middle.
Okay.
But who was going to do the installation of the-
Well, we never got any, I mean, Scott said he had his engineer, you know, there was no, there was no estimates of other companies doing it, that's what we talked about in our meeting. And he gave us an estimate, like you said, $300,000 that his engineer gave to him, but that was with the six-inch line, now it was crossing the creek and all that, and they don't have to cross the creek. I mean, that's the responsibility of the two landowners, you know, when it comes up through there, I mean, and then with the right-of-way, where they put Mrs. Krill, since we'd been here last, she'd gotten water, they could come right down that power line, all the way down the road.
And who put her water in?
Tom, you know more about that.
Contractors from Clinton.
Clinton Water.
Clinton Water put it in, but I don't know what contractors they used to put it in.
But first, could we have your name and address for the record, so you-
James Kaiser, 1240 Bloody Run Road.
Since I wasn't here, if it's all right with you, since you're asking for our help, and I agree with Bill, since we need to go back to see what was going on, and we could ask where it is in the process. So you're saying you worked through Clinton Water District?
Yeah.
And they were the ones who were supposed to-
Get back with me.
Okay, so what we, are we permitted to ask, or just find out where they are?
Let me, let me suggest some.
Go ahead.
If you gentlemen will concur with this, I'd like to schedule them for a work session and also invite a representative from Clinton Water District-
That's okay.
-so that we can have all the players here-
That's fine.
-to discuss the status, what's happened in the past, and where we need to go for the future.
Because we had a meeting with Clinton Water and all the families, give them permission for a right-of-way through their property if need be, had no cost to them, so that cut the cost also.
Now, all 14 families, 100% are in favor of doing this?
Yes, sir.
And they're all willing to share-
Yes, sir.
...reasonably in the cost? Okay, yeah.
We all have wells, we got like iron in them, and the one house up there-
Two E coli.
The one house up there, they got like a, is it 500 gallon holding type water type?
Something like that, yeah.
Hold water in and do it.
Can we do that, Diane?
Yeah, what we'll do then, I like-
Can we contact with the Water District?
We'll go with Mr. Bartolo's suggestion.
See if they'll send a representative.
Going to contact you all and make sure, you know, we have a phone number before at the end, make sure you see Diane, so we get a phone number, and then we can call and put everyone together.
Yeah, just like we get some communication.
That's what, that's-
This happens with Clinton, I mean, we've been doing this for 10 years.
Yeah.
And that's what happens, if we get the commission meeting, then we don't hear-
Well, this is the kind of thing-
In this lot, yeah.
This is the kind of thing that I hate to see with no closure. Issues drag on, and then next thing you know, frustration and disgust sets in.
All right.
So we need to get closure on this issue.
Well, and we will get back to you, okay?
So we'll leave our number to you, and you'll get back-
Yeah, with Diane, because hopefully this shouldn't go too long.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, within the next couple of weeks.
Yes, that would be great. Okay, is there somebody else who would like to speak from the public? Hi, come on down.
I'll go under call, yeah, James, I know.
Okay, you know, again, please state your name, where you live, and also remember that you'll have three minutes.
My name is Lawson Barakas, I live at 435 Coben Avenue in Morgantown. And I came here basically about the Scotch Run storage system, and I mentioned it once before- And I mentioned it once before, but I don't think Scotch Run should be taken over by Morgantown. Because I had an experience with Morgantown back ten years ago about the Ponfano Run Sewer. It's, it's, it was built back in the thirties during Roosevelt's days out of concrete. And that concrete has deteriorated to the point where it doesn't hold an overflow of sewage and storm water that comes down through there. That sewage includes the University Hospital, all that stuff that's coming from the hospital, all, most of Suncrest. But anyway, when I approached Morgantown about the problem, I, I have some pictures here.
Sure.
Because-
All right.
I have one there.
I'll give it to him if you want.
You have two there.
Yeah. Okay.
Anyway, but if you, if you see them-
Just give me one of the key ones. There's just a, yeah.
If you see, if you look at the center picture, that's what the box sewer line looks like that was built back in the thirties. And I want, I, I just wanna emphasize that that sewer is still there. They've upgraded it from there, not far from there, back in Morgantown, they upgraded the Morgantown area. But when they got to the city line, they left that. And it breaks out very often, even today, when it rains hard, you see that center picture is when it lifted the top off and the sewage and storm water was coming out and running all over the place and running through my wife's property. We were working in that area and we wanted to get it fixed. And they, what they did first was just lay plywood on it. Well, the next rain that came, the plywood ended up down by Shoney's back anyway. But that concrete sewer is still in that condition. And it breaks out often. I've talked to a one man who, who, I asked if he goes down to Ponfano Run. He said, I go down there often. He said they go down because it breaks out, they patch it, it breaks out, they patch it. But in the meantime, all that stuff is coming out of that sewer and getting on people's property and it's unsanitary. That stuff's coming, a lot of it's coming from the University Hospital. But, and I went to the health department, I went to the, I came to the county commission, that was before you were on it anyway, and I couldn't, couldn't get any help. I went to the public service, they had a hearing, and at one time, they had proposed to replace it, but they wanted to do it in such a way that it would ruin the property that my wife had. They wanted to go right through the center part of it. And when they did, when they, when they sent the proposal out, they didn't say how many feet of right of way they wanted, they just said center line. When I questioned it, they ended up saying forty feet. And when I mentioned that to Don Spencer, he said, that's why I don't beat Churchill Channel. But they wanted a forty foot right of way through the property for one dollar.
Mr. Baracus, at, is there a way you could conclude, cause I'm, I'm giving you more than the time, if you can conclude what you would like?
Well, basically, I'm saying Scotch Run, if something happens in Scotch Run-
Okay.
The same thing could happen.
Could happen.
Morgantown could say, that's Scotch Run, let it go. This wasn't in Morgantown, so they let it go.
Right.
It's still in that condition.
Okay.
But anyway, I think Scotch Run Public Service would take care of something in Scotch Run. Where MUB, if they have two problems, one in Morgantown and one in Scotch Run-
Clarify something for me. Where is this located at? This is, is this in Scotch Run?
No, no, that's in, outside of Morgantown with the-
He's using an analogy.
Okay, I'm, I'm just trying to-
Okay, where, you know where the state police barracks is on Boulevard?
Yeah, you've been to Morgantown council meetings?
Oh, yes, yes.
To no avail.
Mr. Boroff said, it's okay because downstream, there's a legal, there, there is a so-called legal runoff where the storm water gets in sewage water. They can legally let it go out the creek. And that situation is about a hundred yards down, down from where we were working. And Mr. Boroff said, well, that's okay because downstream, there's a legal runoff. Well, it's not there though, it's downstream.
Okay. Okay, I really appreciate you coming for us.
And I appreciate you coming up with five commissioners. I think that's, that'll be a great thing.
Thank you.
And also television, I don't know what.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Are there other individuals who'd like to speak? Sure, come on down.
I don't have an issue I wish to comment on. I just need a clarification of an earlier action for the September twenty-fourth public hearing.
Fourth.
Or fourth round.
Fourth, yes.
Did you set a location?
Sure, sure. We're hoping for the sheriffs, yeah.
I think, I don't think it's gonna be any problem with that, really. We just need to confirm-
Sheriff, that's what we're recommending.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for asking that. Just so, any other? Sure, come on down.
My name is Jill Ware. I've been working with the Scotch Run Public Service District. That procedure is still in process, as you might know, in Charleston. What I'd like to address today is what appears to be a pattern that's dismaying to those of us who are represented by the county commission. Recently in the paper, was an article, was a, a letter to the editor about a statue dedicated to Zackel Morgan. At one time in the history of the county commission, a vote, an official vote was made to put a statue of Zackel Morgan when it could be funded, and people were working on that, volunteers were working on that. To be put in the, in the center, right there at the, you know, in the courthouse square. And then Commissioner Callan decided not to do that and to do something else. That was dismaying to the people who'd been working on that project. Camp Muffley, of course, is a voluntary, a project that had been voluntary run for many, many, many years. And the county commission decides to take it, to, to change the pattern of volunteerism and the opportunity for volunteerism and to make it a governmental thing. And finally, Scotch Run, voluntarily organized, organized by local people in the community because they could not get the kinds of services that they requested many times from both governmental agencies, the county commission and other agencies, as well as MUB, which I think is a quasi-governmental agency, it seems to get some support from government. But not, from neither, from any place could Scotch Run get sewage, infrastructure, or any kind of help to do so. They've organized themselves, they created an agency, and now it's being taken over by the city and MUB, even though the project out there is unfinished and they have many things that they wanna do out there. Here's another question. If the county commission, now, when we came with the Scotch Run PSD problem, the county commission said, that's out of our hands, that's not our business. So the question is, if you can involve yourselves in the fourteen families of Bloody Run, why cannot you take an interest in what looks like at least seventy families and maybe more out in Scotch Run who need sewage? Thank you.
I normally don't respond to comments, but I feel compelled to respond to some of your comments.
Sure.
One, I think they lack a basis of fact. Two, you certainly provided inadequate information on who you're representing and in what capacity you're representing. You talk in general terms of a lot of people, I don't know who that, who that is. I mean, when you talk about the courthouse square, Camp Muffley, Scotch Run, I'm a bewilderment of who you're representing to this commission. The, the other thing is, I appreciate your attendance, excuse me, I appreciate your attendance and I appreciate your comments, but, but I just can't leave comments that are not on a basis of fact go, because the difference between Scotch Run and, and Bloody Run is completely different.
Okay.
And, and therefore, I mean, I just need, for the record, need to be set straight that, that I strongly disagree with the points that were made by this, this speaker. That's all.
Is there someone else who would like to speak?
Yeah, I'd just like-
Could you come up here, please, state your name?
My name's David Colder. I live in Westover, but I was raised up down in Osage all my life. You, you know the Colder, Mr. Bartolos?
Yes, I do.
And she's representing a lot of people down Osage.
I'm not saying she's not representing anyone, I just don't know who she's representing. Is the people in Osage also-
The citizens of this county.
Hold it.
Is the people in Osage also the people she's representing for the courthouse square statue?
It's gonna be fun.
For the Camp Muffley?
The citizens of this county.
Okay.
I think there's a lack of basis of fact.
Yeah, I'll use it. This, hold it. This isn't gonna happen while I'm running the meeting. Now, again, feel free at your time to discuss what you'd like to say and allow-
Her representation.
Scott. Okay, that's, that's what we do. We come to a meeting and we have order and we actually hear both sides to a story. So if you'd like to come back, Mr. Colder, you're more than welcome to. I wasn't mad at you, cause you were discussing things. Would you like to come back and discuss your comments, please?
Well, I'm-
And let's not interrupt, let him, okay?
Well, I'm just saying, sir, that she represents-
Sure.
I'm just saying both of you, and I have no disrespect for you or anyone in this room.
Right.
But I'm just saying, you said that she don't represent no one. She represents a lot of people out there, she does a lot of work for us. She, I live in Westover, I've been living in Westover for thirty-three years, but she, I was raised up in Osage and stuff, and I go to all the meetings we have down there and she puts a lot of work into that. And I'm just saying that she, I'm not getting upset, but she represents a lot of people down there and you have no right to say that she don't represent no one. Okay?
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, that's quite all right, no. Look, this is an emotional issue, did you-
Mr. Pratt, again, I wanna correct the record, I don't think I made a statement, she don't represent anyone. I said, I didn't know who she represented.
Well, she represents a lot of people.
This, this is recorded. Now, you made an accusation that I said she didn't represent anyone.
Yes, sir.
I don't think I made that statement. The record of, of these proceedings would, would verify whether you're, you're accurate or I am, but I disagree with that statement for the record.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's, that's quite all right, that's why we're gonna get this clarified, but I really appreciate you coming before us. Thank you very much.
Well, okay, I'd like to say one more thing.
Sure, go ahead.
I don't believe it was right for you to take everything away from, from the people down in our area, I think Bob Martin and Albert Anderson was doing a great job down there, and for you to take it away and give it to MUB, because they was doing a great job down there, they never had no problems whatsoever down there for, how many years did you have, Bob, fourteen, fifteen?
Fifteen.
Fifteen years, and they did a great job, everyone loved what they was doing down there, and then you just took it away and give it to MUB. And that's my personal opinion.
Okay.
I'm allowed to have a personal opinion, right?
Sure, I can.
Like I say, I lived in Westover for thirty-three years, but I love Osage and love everybody out there, and they're all doing a great job. That's my personal opinion.
And that's why you're here before us and that's what we wanted to hear.
I just come to these meetings as a personal opinion, I wasn't even planning on saying a thing until I thought that Jill was attacked. And that's the only reason I come up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And thank you for the clarification, I do appreciate that.
Thank you, sir, for letting me speak.
Sure. Is there someone else who would like to get up and speak?
I have to correct the record. We didn't take anything away from Scotch Run Public Service District, and that needs to be in the record. That decision is still to be made by the Public Service Commission. We were part of the process to move it on, but, but our decision is not the determining factor whether Scotch Run Public Service District or MUB takes over. I just wanna correct that for the record. We never made a decision to take anything away from Scotch Run Public Service.
Sir, if you'd like to come down and speak, please, that way everyone knows who you are. Thank you. Thank you for coming down.
My name's Ron Martin.
Yes, Mr. Martin.
But you guys' decision caused the problem, you two helped to cause the problem.
Not me. Not me. Now, Bob, great.
You, Eva Carolyn-
Bill, let him just speak, please.
And Asil Kennedy, and you too, Diane, we got the papers, you too, that's all I need to know. Okay.
Okay.
We got it.
Okay. There's, seems to be a difference of opinions, that's why we're here. Okay, is there anyone else out there who would like to speak? Sure, come on. Hi, come on in.
Mike on the hold. It'll pick up, you won't have to. Evan Dove, thirty-seven Shady Grove, Morgantown, West Virginia. Good afternoon to the council. I would just like to say, upon your request for better correspondence with West Virginia University and student government of it, I have been appointed as county affairs liaison to this commission, should you choose to accept me as that liaison. Any information or any correspondence between the county and any affairs within, inside the county that would wish to be addressed to the student government of West Virginia University, or something we could assist to get to West Virginia University as a whole, please let me know at any time. Thank you for having me here, if there's any questions, I'm available after the meeting.
Well, thank you, Evan. Do we have to have a formal motion at the night?
I'll take his card.
Okay, we'll take his card. We will invite you, you will find out in late September, there will be a meeting of all the cities with the county, hopefully late September, and we are hoping that WVU student body will be in the audience with WVU officials. So we will keep you informed in that.
We'll be here.
But thank you very much.
Thank you.
And tell Ryan Campion I said hello, one of my students. Is there anyone else who would like to have this? Okay, seeing none, I will close the comments from the public, and before I ask for adjournment, there was one other issue, I just wanted to make sure that we put it on record, I know we had discussed it before, but I wanna make sure we do have an executive session next, next meeting.
Yes.
And I would ask for a second, just so we would have that on the record, and that would be to discuss legal matters and financial matters concerning the sports complex, I will not call it the other thing.
I don't have any problems with that, I don't, I don't even think you need a motion.
Okay, then that's fine, as long as we have it, so, so that you know that, we know that, there's two of us who know that's gone. Okay, seeing that, it is now two oh eight, we've had a fun time today. We will have a ten-minute recess and that way everyone can discuss what had happened. Thank you. Oh, do you have a move for adjournment?
Yeah, I, I moved that we adjourned.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, two oh eight, thank you.